Welcome to the Hillsborough County Public Council's Public Hearing. I'm the owner of the Sales Tax Department. So I want to welcome everyone here today. We're going to turn it back over to our chairman, Mr. Merrill. And then we'll start the public hearing. Mr. Merrill.
Commissioners, as with prior public hearing, we're not planning to make any presentation at this stage. Plenty of presentations so far, so I think unless the board wants any introductory remarks, we can go right to the public panel.
Okay. We're going to open for public hearing. I ask anyone who comes forward, please state your name, address. We ask that you please make your comments to the issue of not directly being commissioned. You have three minutes to make your comments. The other light, the other lights here comes on in about three minutes until they finish up talking. So we'll start off, first person is Sam Sudman, followed by Edward Durham.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sam Sudman, and I reside at 1807 East Gell Boulevard, Sun City Center, Florida. I am Vice President and Director on the Board of Directors of the Sun City Center Community Association. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on a matter of urgent concerns to the 11,000 members and residents of Sun City Center Community Association. I am here today on behalf of our community in support of placing the proposed half percent sales tax on the November ballot. The half percent sales tax is earmarked for critically intensive station improvements as they impact the safety and quality of life of those that live within and visit Sun City Center daily. These improvements and maintenance will not be resolved in one, two, or three years. In fact, it will take more than ten. The 11,000 voting members of Sun City Center are aware of and respect the individual preferences of the Commissioners on a tax increase. We ask that you set aside your personal views at this time in efforts to the needs of the residents. Now, Bill Grove County had approved the placement of the half percent sales tax on the November ballot to enable the voters to express their choice for funding the much-needed improvements. Some issues that confront you and us deserve consideration and action based on merit and not politics. This is one such issue. Other realistic alternatives to provide the needed funding have not surfaced. The South Shore is where growth is in Bill Grove County is occurring now, and safe, adequate roadways have not kept pace. Currently approved for construction around the State Route 674 and US 301 intersection alone are roughly 10,000 homes, which will add approximately 25,000 additional residents and up to 20,000 cars to an already traffic congested area. Also considered to two new businesses, Wawa and Olive, which will contribute many additional drivers to our already congested roadways. Add to that the many new homes being built between US 301 and US 41, plus the traffic from the Amazon fulfillment center on 19th Avenue. Mobility fees will only partially fill this void. As you are aware, mobility fees are limited to new construction only. The half percent sales tax is the only reliable, reasonable, and practical source of revenue to provide for transportation improvements for the South Shore and Sun City Center in particular. Pleasantly frustrated drivers traveling to our community exit the main thoroughfares and seek the internal roads to avoid the traffic snarl on State Route 674 and 19th Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Edward Durham, followed by George Neiman.
My name is Edward Durham of the 45, 25 West Henry Avenue. My simple statement I've got to say about, I'm a member of the Hillsborough County Republican Executive Committee, Tampa 912, Tampa Tea Party. I find myself amazed at my fellow Republicans. You need to rethink this, folks. And I'm saying this to you that 30 years ago, nobody envisioned driverless cars. You're trying to bring a 19th century solution to a 21st century problem. We don't know what type of device will be available over 20 years that will make your choo-choo train obsolete and worthless, or just an antique ride. I would propose that a more conservative approach to your budget be used to find the money that may be of better expense, and then we go from there and then we take a look at, seriously look at transportation, at least without a tax and suspended tax, until we have a better idea of what the growth is going to be like, what the income is going to be like, and then we use this thing that really envisions what the future technology as it comes along. Thank you very much.
George Neiman, followed by Enrique Rubens.
Sorry, I ran out of talk. George Neiman, Doverwood Homestead Association, Dover 33527. This transportation deficit was caused by this and previous commissions. Their policies created this mess. Principally, three things caused the problems we're now facing. First is the reduction in money allocated to our maintenance and expansion of the transportation network. Second is the failure to collect adequate impaties from those that develop residential and commercial property. And third, the policy of encouraging and creating sprawl, which is so inefficient and has driven up the cost of our infrastructure network. Commissioners, you sit there today and tell us we need to raise taxes, but you haven't done a thing to fix the root causes of the problem. The solution is not a tax increase. You need to go back and do the following. Make growth pay for itself. Your new mobility fee is nothing but a scam. We are still paying for 80% of the transit impacts every time something is built in this county. Growth shouldn't cost us a dime. Instead of lining the pockets of land developers, give the average taxpayer a break. Reallocate the budget to provide more money for transportation. There is still a lot of entitlements and giveaways in our budget that could be used for transit, but you refuse to even look at them. As just one example, you give away a lot of our money to chambers of commerce and other nonprofits. Your bad growth policies have made a mess of transportation. Change them now. Commit right now to the public that you will stop approving costly sprawl. Folks, please don't be fools. They want you to tax yourself, but they want you to continue their business. They want to continue their business as usual policies. Have you noticed how they don't want to talk about the root causes or their policies? As an example, Commissioner Hayden was at a luncheon recently and was asked to talk about the deficit that was created. He said that we shouldn't get bogged down in Monday morning quarterbacking. We should just understand that more tax money is needed. They think that all they have to say is that we're out of money and there will be enough, and they need more. I urge you, don't go along with this tax. If you say no to the tax, they will be forced to change their ways and correct the mismanagement that we've been paying for, for all of these years. Thank you.
Mr. Woodruff, followed by Ron Frye.
My name is Mr. Woodruff, and I'm the current president of the Western Alliance and also a member of the Chamber of Commerce Boardrooms. It's an interesting comment when you start looking at what we're trying to accomplish. Without good transportation, without good mobility, I think we are really in the troubled area. I love coming if you had a chance to read Sandy Kennedy's opinion piece yesterday. I think all of you will send it again, and I call it a very strong piece. And pretty much what he was saying is, we were here 20 years ago. We were there. Twenty years ago, actually 14 years ago, they were here, Sandy Hawke, as the Chamber of Commerce President, asking the Commission to please allow the citizens, not you, the citizens, to vote, to allow us to develop some funding. In April, this Commission, the leadership group, approved almost a billion dollars' worth of work. I think that's a brilliant number. That's close to the 10-year deal. I think there are going to be a lot of things that are going to come up with when you start doing work that impact other things. And all we're asking for is to help us, the citizens, to allow to be able to do this. In turn, what happens to the Western Alliance, it's really pretty important. Western, you ever hear of Western? That's the only way to get out of Western Alliance. If this passes, we get Rio, we get trash, we get our. I wanted to leave you, because you're going to be hearing a lot of people, I wanted to leave you with a baseball analogy. Yogi Berra has a famous saying, deja vu all over again. Well, let me tell you, I don't believe that tonight. I think tonight, not to give you, you have a chance to go up a bat. And I think if you bat and you allow the citizens to vote, it's a win-win for the Commission, and it's a win-win for the community. Whether it passes or not, I'm just asking that we be allowed to be part of the process. After three years of the Commission and the leadership group working, I can't beat a shot to hell. Thank you.
The Ron Frye, followed by Kate Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Avon Frye, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Hillsborough Commission on Status of Women. I'm also Chair-Elected Plant City Chamber and a member of the Executive Committee of Plant City EDC, but tonight I speak on behalf of the CUSW. Our work plan each year encompasses two areas of focus. We recognize women's accomplishments through the Hillsborough Women's Hall of Fame, and we appreciate all of your support on this annual luncheon and awards process. We also choose an issue each year to work on that affects the status of women in Hillsborough County. We have creatively and effectively tackled women's health, economic opportunities, sex trafficking, domestic violence, childcare, housing, higher education, and this past year, nutrition. We take the approach to not only identify the gaps, but to work with the stakeholders in our community to develop solutions. When appropriate, we've brought opportunities to this body to be a part of those solutions. Most of the time, the answers, resources, and capacity, along with the collective will, exists in our community to affect successful outcomes. We're very proud of the impact of CUSW and appreciate the opportunity to serve citizens of Hillsborough County in this capacity. Over the past several years, one topic has surfaced as the consistent and strongest factor affecting all of the issues that we've addressed. We went back to reports issued in partnership with USF and evaluated the programs and discussions on each of these topics, and this one topic continued to surface as the underlying pillar that affects the status of women in our county. That topic is transportation. Transportation options, access, and affordability factors affect women and children in a very different way than men. As a result, the Hillsborough Commission on the Status of Women has chosen transportation as our area of focus this year. We're waiting to see the outcomes of our options on transportation facing our community to determine how we're going to proceed with engaging the community on this issue, but we're committed to elevating the discussion amongst women on how to improve the status of women through increasing our transportation plans in Hillsborough County. We've resolved to ask you to provide leadership on a comprehensive plan for our county and to ultimately let the voters decide on this very important issue. We also ask for urgency of bringing a referendum to the ballot as our citizens, especially women, are negatively affected by our lack of options and planning. Thank you for your consideration and leadership on this issue.
Before Mr. Merrill speaks to the members up here, once this room overflows and the staff speakers on the screen, you'll see it by the screen, and you have the persons downstairs over the speaking, but we will still be able to see them, and they'll hear us and whatever. Mr. Merrill, followed by Mickey Jacob.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kent Bailey, 50012 Highway 301, Notice Ass, the Chair of Tampa Base Air Club, speak on behalf of 12,000 members and supporters. I want to say to you this evening that if we leave here tonight without putting the sales tax increase on the ballot, many will say we failed. My view is that we haven't failed unless we put a referendum on the ballot and had it defeated at polls. Losing at polls again would be far worse than waiting for a better day. My concern is this: Do the citizens of Hillsborough County trust their government enough to pass this ballot measure in November? And to that point, let me say this: At several meetings with the county, I was told numerous times that funding for the high-speed ferry project was in no way contingent on the passage of the sales tax referendum, but when the sales tax stalled, funding for the high-speed ferry disappeared. When faced with the prospect of moving forward without a sales tax, the County Administrator's Office produced a budget document that increased spending for roads from $61 million to $255 million in a single year, a 419% increase, while shorting all kinds of worthy projects and programs. We all understand that the county has a huge infrastructure deficit, recession, sprawl, low development fees, but this is changing. You are holding the line on sprawl. Eventually, development will be paying more. County revenue is increasing steadily. Maybe we'll even see a gas tax someday. But we don't have to choose between a budget that immediately and dramatically ramps up spending for roads at the expense of everything else and a sales tax increase going on this ballot. The Sierra Club will see a good sales tax referendum succeed. We will enthusiastically support a sales tax that funds public transportation, and it will be successful at the polls if the voters trust their county government. The question for you tonight is simply this: Right now, do you think the citizens of Hillsborough County are going to approve this sales tax increase in November? Before we go forward, that is the critical question that has to be answered. Thank you.
Mr. Jacob, followed by Jake Austin.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mickey Jacob. I reside at 450 Main Street in Tampa, Florida. In full disclosure, I am a Hillsborough County county to the heart force, but I stand before you tonight as a private citizen, as an architect, a business owner, and a father in this community. I think everybody in this room tonight, regardless of their opinion, agrees on one thing: We have a situation, a transportation problem that continues to grow worse day by day. We all agree something has to be done. I believe that the thing that has to be done is to take a long-term action that will provide the necessary funding that will address all the transportation issues that will hopefully solve all the problems that everybody in this room has, regardless of where you reside in this community. I am asking you today not to just consider a 15-year half-cent sales tax to fund transportation, but to look at a minimum of 20-year sales tax. By using a long-term solution that will provide the necessary funding, that will increase our bond capacity, that will provide opportunity for federal funding to be used as well, is the best, and I believe the only, solution. You've heard a lot of people talk about the ballot situation and the community's feelings on that. I believe that you as a county commission with the unanimous, bold, and daring vote that will put us into the future, that will fund the needs that we have, is the way to do this and to show our community we are unified, we are there to be good leaders in this community, and we're willing to work hard and take the necessary risks to make this community a better place, that will hopefully solve our transportation issues and improve the quality of life. I work every day on projects trying to do that in this community, and I will continue to dedicate myself to work to do that. And nobody likes the increase in taxes, and I don't either. But I understand the investment necessary to do that. I believe this is a worthy investment in our community to make that happen. And that's because as a father, my 25-year-old son, who graduated USF and just finished his commitment to the United States Marine Corps, came to me last week and told me he's leaving the Tampa Bay region. He's moving to another community, and he's moving because he wants to go to a place where he has transportation options. This is a personal issue, so I'm for you to consider this. I ask you to look into the crystal ball far into the future, and you need to absolutely support this measure. I appreciate your opportunity to speak tonight, and I hope you will make a decision that will work to make a greater in the future. Thank you.
Jake Austin, followed by Ron Palmer.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Jake Austin. I'm the President and CEO of Plant City Economic Development Corporation. We're a public-private partnership made up of representatives from the city of Plant City and over 50 private investors, private companies that operate, most of whom are based in Hillsborough County. Our board feels that a well-thought-out transportation plan is important for economic development, jobs, quality of life, and most importantly, talent improvement. It's no secret that communities with quality infrastructure, transit options, and funded long-term transportation plans is where the talent is headed. The Commission and county staff have done an exceptional job of researching and developing a plan against it. We support a referendum with a financial strategy that implements that plan, a referendum before the citizens of Hillsborough County decide. The issues are well documented, and the consensus is that we have to do so, and we have to act fast. For the next emerging NSA, hundreds of thousands are migrating here from around the globe to take advantage of our way of life. Let's act now and address the issue before it's too late, and that bug will all help to create shifts in the community. As a proud member of the infamous millennial generation, I can tell you the real truth. We're a different breed. We're very, we have very different demands in any generation of course. We like having multiple commute options and safe alternative ways to get to where we spend our money. Petty congestion in substandard roads and bridges is just on credit. Like or not, we're quickly taking over this workforce. We're moving to or near trendy metros that offer us a quality of life that we're entitled to, and we thank our parents for instilling that sense of entitlement. It doesn't appear that voters can be given the option to vote on a referendum that would fund all of the proposed projects, or how a return gets strongly needed. Thank you for allowing me to address it.
Ron Palmer, followed by Guy King.
Good evening. My name is Ron Palmer. I live at 5203 Avenue Lacrosse, Inwood. I appreciate the opportunity to express my appreciation tonight. I've had an engineering career for 33 years, most of that time I served as a professional licensed engineer. I attended most of the county meetings. I appreciated those meetings because I had the opportunity to become more familiar with the data, with the complexity, and develop an impression that there are many experts who've evaluated the choke points, the critical safety issues that exist in our county. As a result of that, I should mention that I kind of took that data and correlated that with the fact that I'm currently the chairman of a CDD that is in the northern part of the county. It seems that over the last few years, as we have those board meetings, more and more the residents, about 1,600, 1,700 residents that live in this CDD, have complained about the fact that they wanted more traffic lights in the area to prevent safety problems that exit the community. They've also mentioned other areas where, of course, the CDD has no control. But they were asking the CDD as a board to be more expressive in recommending to the Commissioners that something be done. And I'm occasionally contacting some individuals on this commission to ask them if they could intervene, to help us out. I can't add a lot of data. I won't do that. I won't take your time to do that. But what I can indicate is that one of the impressions I got from those county-wide meetings was that the answers seemed to be more taxes. We simply have to have more tax. I looked at the budgets. I talked with the professionals that were there from the county and asked about, well, what about this issue? What about this issue? They simply came out with, well, we look at that, we have to have more tax. I'm here to ask you to vote no on taking this forward to the public. The public in general, I don't think, understands that complexity, and they vote on an emotional basis without fully understanding in detail. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair to ask a public to vote on something where the issues are very profound, they're very complex, they're understood by very few people in the general public. I think that you understand those issues now much better than anybody else and can make the decision that we should go back and take a look at the budget. There are proposals that have been made, and I appreciate those, now that proposals have been made, to take a look at this budget, understand that we are growing, tax revenue is coming in, and to actually address this problem with measures that are already in hand. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Guy King, followed by Tim Curtis.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Guy King. I live at 1457 Bay Shore Boulevard. I live all my life. Our insurance company, I'm the president of, has been here for 96 years. And I have a company that's got 15 employees, and we have employees in Pasco, Ellis, Foltz, and Hillsborough. And we're having problems right now with them to be able to get in and get into town and get out of town at the end of the workday. And we're having trouble with our agents being able to visit our clients. Used to be we could visit four to five clients in one day, and now we're here where we're there one in the morning, one in the afternoon, just because of the transportation challenges. So some small businesses, about 80% of the new jobs in Hillsborough County, small businesses are really being impacted. I'm also the, have the honor of being this year's chairman of the Greater Tampa Chamber of Commerce, and clarify that we receive no funds from Hillsborough County. But my idea is that Tampa is on fire, so is Plant City, so is Temple Terrace, and so is Hillsborough County. We're all doing great. We have one issue that is kind of dividing us and causing us all off of the path of this for transportation. And if we could work together on that, I think we'd be back to the business of building a great community. I think everybody's been a great job, we're going through a tough time, and I support a 20-year option because it takes a 20-year sustainable financial plan to get matching federal law. And that proves my report, and thank you for this opportunity.
Tim Curtis, followed by Jeff Lucas.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tim Curtis from Plant City, and I'd like to say first off, I'm opposed to increasing our taxes, to you increasing our taxes because of the Commission's failure to properly budget. And I find it instructive and revealing about the lack of knowledge of economics to say that property taxes are an unreliable source of tax revenue while in the same breath declaring that somehow sales are unaffected by declining economy. Commissioners, there is a direct correlation between taxes and the economy. That thinking illustrates a lack of understanding of a dynamic economy, and anyone with that deficient knowledge of economics should never be entrusted with the responsibility for multi-billion-dollar budget. Commissioners, we don't trust your tax hikes. Someone earlier is talking about doing this based on trust. Commissioners, you all don't enjoy the public trust. And anyone that puts nice over necessary is not qualified to lead. I spent 20 years in the Corps. I understand what leadership is all about. And your pet projects, being more important in public safety and repairing public transit, is unworthy of public trust. We don't trust your tax hikes. And no one likes a shell game. Commissioner Hayden left. He's the one who brought that up. Those were our citizens who had a shell game perpetrated on them by this Commission, and I'm elected, I'm a county bureaucrat for too long. It's not a game. There's nothing funny about having to make tough decisions about where to allocate scarce resources. But that's the job that each of you all asked for when you asked us to be our representatives. It's hard work, and if one or some of you all aren't up to it, you should resign. There are other citizens who are willing to put in the necessary work to properly prioritize the scarce resources that we have right now to address the challenges, that being transportation, great green affair. But we can do that with our current revenues, and if you're going to put every tough decision up for a public referendum, Commissioners, we don't need you all. We can just do it by referendum. And now I'd like to look at the myth of destroying neighborhoods and finally listening to the people. Your sales tax increase, your sales tax increase will destroy the budgets of those least able to afford to pay more. It won't affect public officials that are paid nearly $100,000. Many paid over $100,000, and some paid in excess of $300,000. They won't be impacted by that. But the poor, and those on fixed income, the elderly, and others will directly feel the negative burden of your sales tax increase.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Jeff Lucas, followed by Gregory Park. Jeff Lucas, followed by Charlie Clark.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Lucas, and I live at ninety-three twelve Wellington Park Circle in Tampa. As a native of the Bay Area, it's been really exciting to see the growth that's taken place in the last couple of decades here in Tampa and Hillsborough County. With that growth, there comes challenges. And before returning to the area in two thousand twelve, I spent fifteen years in exile in Atlanta, Georgia. And while living in Atlanta, I drove forty thousand miles a year, forty thousand very slow miles a year. And it impacts, traffic impacted every part of your life up there. Just think about, you have to go pick your daughter up like I did, and you have to drive from Buckhead to the suburbs like most of us do. You know, that's a thirty-minute drive, but I'd leave two hours early to make that trip. But when we get to see race play downtown, then it takes, you have to allocate two hours for it to be a thirty-minute drive. The point of that isn't that Atlanta's traffic is bad. The point of that is, I've seen our future, I can make the picture for you, and it's not true. I think we can all agree we've got transportation problems, and the fact that a significant part of this sales tax would come from visitors in the area, people that don't live here, people that come here, spend money, and then leave, is, is a huge part of this to me. It's free money for the citizens of Hillsborough County. Secondly, the average cost to a household, as I understand it, is somewhere around a hundred dollars, seventy-five a week. And I can't speak for everybody, but I'd gladly give up one of those ice keys that I break to McDonald's every day for better transportation solutions in, in Hillsborough County. I think the protocol of this is put the referendum on the ballot to vote for three things. One, our ability to create jobs in this area, quality jobs. Two, quality of life, it's as simple as that. Better transportation leads to a better quality of life. And three, our children, and creating a better future for our children. I've got a six-year-old daughter, she's the most important thing in my life. Here in Mickey Jenkins, talk about his twenty-five-year-old son that's leaving that area, I assure you, I don't want to face that same ta- that same problem in nineteen years. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for your wisdom.
Brandon Martin, followed by Jim Davison.
Thank you, Brandon Martin, formerly of Brandon Farad fifty-five-one-one, and now lives in the Orlando area, working there. I am here along with a lot of young people who are, they're mostly in the back, who are supporting something that will positively benefit Hillsborough County's future. I'm here to support the ordinance, and on top of that, to allow voters to have a say in, on this important issue. While the surtax, as it currently stands, is set to under fifteen years, as it was set at the last meeting, twenty years or thirty years would show that this, that Hillsborough County would be more willing to, to improve its transportation issue, and would make it, make us look more willing to get federal funding. And that would also address our long-term problem, the problem for the long-term millennials, as I know of. We do care about it, and you probably hear that term a lot, and it's, it's true. I did find a study that was put out in twenty fourteen by the Rockefeller Foundation, and found that fifty, fifty-four percent of millennials consider moving to a city and has more options getting around, and that it's one of their top three criteria for deciding to live somewhere. Personally, before I lived in Tampa, I grew up in New York City, so experiencing public transit and how it does better your standard of living and then moving here, I'm waiting for, for Tampa's day to shine pretty much. I think we all, I think that's, that's obviously why, why we're all here, that's why we're all here in this room today. I think this is something that would definitely bring us to the forefront, not only in the state, but in the country. Something that the Greater Tampa Chamber of Commerce put out for one of the talking points really struck me because I feel like on this issue, we tend to look within our own bubble, and it really is more about the community as a whole. I'm just agreeing. As a resident of Hillsborough County, you'll benefit from additional investments in transportation. You probably won't take a bus to the hospital, but you're nursing. You might not drive down the Pine Crest Road, but you're applying to our employee. And you probably won't ride a bike to the park, but your kids do. You may never use all of the transportation options available to you, but you'll need them because it benefits you directly and indirectly. It takes all of us looking outside of ourselves to the wider community, so I'm hoping that the county commission will take that into account as the reason for supporting this ordinance.
Jim Davison, followed by Gerald Henry.
Jim Davison, I'm the executive director of the last place in Tampa. I was the founder and past chairman of the Tampa Transportation Task Force. I serve as the North, uh, Hillsborough, Tampa Transportation Alliance. I was the city council, Tampa City Council's appointee to the committee of banking and managing. I was one of your citizens advisory committee members, I've been on the healthcare advisory board. I am used to dealing with these budgets. This is my groundhog day, and I'm hoping that we can get him to see a show as they don't have to come back anymore. This budget, this, this question of sales tax is moot because it's not going to pass. You know it's not going to pass, and you know it's not going to pass, and he knows it's not going to pass. They're not, it's not going to pass because the people don't have any confidence in the plan. The costs were done in FY fourteen dollars. The revenues were in FY sixteen estimates two years ago, and it's never been updated by that now. You can't budget. Nobody from the West, uh, Tampa Alliance, or no one from the Chamber of Commerce would do their own budgets like that. Nobody. But today, you have the opportunity to reinstate some confidence. There is a plan on the table that is about to be proposed where you can actually use the money you have to accomplish everything you want to do without a sales tax. Does anybody in this room, put your hands up, if you don't think the government should be as efficient as possible? You don't want it to be as efficient. Everybody wants to be more efficient. And, and the cost that you're going to pay for trying to pass this, and if the goodwill that you will get with the government would be if you do that, and five years from now, you can pass that sales tax, or ten years from now. And if the MPO's plan, if you pass it in five years, there's no change in the performances in twenty forty or twenty forty-five. So you have the time to see if this works. You don't have to pass the sales tax issue. But if you pass it, you are going to possibly lose the people forever. You have a CFT tax on it, possibly lower sales tax. Don't do it. Do the right thing. The county budget, if you do this, will still increase by about four and a half percent a year. The average wage in this county won't increase by more than two percent a year. Are you telling these people that you can't live on twice the amount of money every year that they're way too low on? That's what you're telling them. Try to sell that one. So I urge you, put off the sales tax, investigate the monies, it's not going to pass anyway, and now this way, using this one, you'll have, you'll have a chance to get something.
Gerald Merrill Henry, followed by Sherwood Keller.
Good evening, honorable county commissioners. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Jay Merrill Henry, and I reside in my home at thirty-seven sixteen Keene Road in Plant City, Florida, three-three-five-six-five. I don't need to tell you that our roads in Hillsborough County are a disaster. Have you driven on any road that's not full of potholes? Have you ever seen our roads in such bad shape? I've been a member of Hillsborough County for over seventy years, and I have never seen them in such bad shape. Hillsborough County has an inadequate transportation network with at least an eight to nine billion-dollar backlog of unfunded needs. A number of years ago, I served on the Hillsborough County Citizens Advisory Board, and I understand the hesitancy of you commissioners not wanting to add taxes. Indeed, I don't like taxes. However, I'm asking you today to not be selfish and think only about yourselves or your possible reelection. You need to look beyond our current needs. You need to think about the future for our children and our grandchildren. Do you realize that we are the only major metropolitan area without any rail options? The half-cent sales tax is projected to raise about one hundred and seventeen point five million dollars a year. Everyone that knows me knows how conservative I am, but I'm here to ask you, why stop at a half a cent? Most merchants prefer an even amount. So if we go to a one-cent tax increase, we will double the amount to two hundred and thirty-five million dollars a year. Sales tax is the most fairest of all taxes. This has been proven over and over. Our county administrator has told you that there is not adequate money in the budget for our transportation needs. Listen to it. Bite the bullet. Don't kick this cannon down the road any longer. Something must be done. We have a mess, and time is now. This is about investing in Hillsborough County, in our economy, in jobs, and in our children's and our grandchildren's future. Reality requires thoughtful, bold, and pro- they've been very forward. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Charlotte Greenbaum. Followed by Charlotte Greenbaum.
Good evening, I'm Charlotte Greenbaum, living in Luke's. Before the sales tax pilot hearing, you should be hitting the reset button on the transportation issue. It has become a Rubik's Cube puzzle and incoherent. It's bad policy and flat-out wrong to ask taxpayers to raise their sales tax seven point one percent for money the county already has. I am opposed to any sales tax hike because the county can fund our roads and transportation needs within our existing growing budget. I please, please refer to board policy zero-three dot zero-five dot zero-seven dot zero-zero approved February seventh, two thousand and seven. But the unnecessary tax hike is only part of the problem because there is no transportation plan. An engineered data and metric-driven plan does not exist. We were told recently in the last UCC meeting that the transportation plan was created in July of twenty fourteen, and must have been referring to this. This was never presented to the PLG. This was presented at media briefing on July twenty-ninth. The cost estimates for this came out of the AECOM report, but also was not presented to the PLG or to the county committee. Next, we have the Go Hillsborough proposed half-cent sales tax. Again, there was no plan. After that, Parsons came back and gave us a November fifth, twenty fifteen, ten-year list of projects alphabetized. And then, on April sixth, twenty sixteen, Mike Merrill presented his version of the Hillsborough County Community Transportation Plan. And what popped up there was two hundred and fifty-nine million dollars of maintenance and unincorporated that will be funded not by any sales tax, by general revenue maintenance. The problem is, we don't have a plan. We put the cart before the horse. We all know we have a transportation issue, that we all agree. But we need to understand what you are going to fund. You have projects included in a list of projects with no realistic cost estimates, no data analysis, no technical analysis, no information for even why you're in the plan. So what I would like to see is you reset the button, you've got tons of information, you don't need any more consultants, but you need to create a plan, and then you can fund it within our growing existing budget. Thank you.
Charlotte Greenbaum, followed by Mark Calvert.
Charlotte Greenbaum, Luke's, Florida. The interesting things that I've heard so far are that we need, one, we need a whole pay. We need it for twenty years. Why not eight percent for thirty years? The problem is that it's never going to be enough when you have a government that operated, that's operating the way this project has been brought forth. It's chaos. It's, it's a total tragic chaos and a waste of taxpayers' dollars. When the mayor of Tampa said he'd take whatever he could get, he was inadvertently reflecting the unbounded greed that's involved in this whole episode. When the newspaper article cited the CIT as one of the reasons why you should put this thing on the ballot. The CIT is the poster child for why you should put it on the ballot, because you had a thirty-year tax that you blew through in ten years, and now we're paying for an empty pot. The, the problem is, you have to remember the Berkeley professor's comment last time I spoke to you, when we spoke about Metroville in Dade County. Someone asked, what happens when it turns into stonemint? Which it did, nobody's writing it. And he said, they'll just double the money around the way that they always do. Well, we know that's going to happen this time, too. You see, the problem isn't that the public just doesn't trust what's going on here after the fiasco that started with the manipulation of the CCNA, which started this whole process. That is your big problem. The public doesn't trust. If you have such growth that you're talking about, that we've heard, tremendous amount of growth, and you see it, you see, you see it in the plans for downtown, you see it in the plans in the hinterlands where we see everything being built, like, they're going up overnight. If you can't take that money that's coming in and use the extra money and the growth in the value of the properties, if you can't do that and balance your budget and do what you have to do incrementally using a well-thought-out plan, then you need to find another line of work. And I'm talking about anybody who thinks that they can't do it with the, with the present money. We are really looking at something that has to be paid for by the money that's coming in. I just got something from a realtor. It said to me that the average price per square foot went up seven and a half percent only in the past year for homes, things, or property. That should tell you something. I have to tell you something, we need a deep audit by the state, by an independent auditor, on not only where the money's been going, but a performance in the administrative board. Then when you get to that point and you get the, the answers, then you can begin to trust. Right now, we can take the, the transfusion out of our eyes because we're finished dominating. Thank you.
Mark Calvert, followed by Charlie Clark.
A few anecdotes and some strange things called facts. About six months ago, North Florida Avenue was repaid, well, thank you, but the lanes were narrowed and bike lanes were added. Six months later, I've yet to see a single bicycle, so my ride, my drive that road is happening every day. There is no demand, less than one percent of commuters bike to work in Hillsborough County according to census data. So we are growing, growing fast. Now, despite some of the bad, tough stories we're hearing about, we don't have transportation. But my daughter is moving back, actually, she moved back. So there is a future here for the, the next generation. She moved back because she'd be located here for the job, not to move in back home, like some of the living, so unfortunately have to do. But we are growing, growing fast despite these challenges. Over a million people are moving into the area and adjoining counties by twenty forty. Even if the triple transit ridership, and you could do the math as I've done it, then about eight hundred thousand of those people will still be driving on our roads. Yet the reality is, part TSTA, the ridership, is kicking us down in the last year or so. We don't have a major central business district to support high trains or ridership. We have dispersed increasingly mobile workforce across the downtown, west shore, USF, Mcgill, High Court, Central Court, or in the rest of the county, increasingly more and more in the south county. So we must support mobility across the area and support those who can't drive with effective transit. But let's keep, let's understand that transit is good at. It's good at providing services that those who don't drive, can't drive, who need to get around. But it doesn't reduce congestion, it doesn't reduce commute times, it's not a great tool for economic reasons. There's a lot better tools, we all have to do that. According to the American Public Transit Association's own numbers, despite the communities such as Portland, Denver, Charlotte, you can run the law, spend billions and billions on transit and rail solutions, the percentage of the commuter population is not moved. That is, that's the fact. That's their own data. They've not added transit riderships in their areas, and we will not be any different. So let's learn together, spitters. It's the roads. We have to invest in our roads. That's something we all use. So we will continue to have more growth in the suburbs than the rest of the urban areas. And even lately, if just do a shopper's comparison of looking at a one-bedroom downtown versus a twenty-five-hundred square foot in Northdale, do the math, even the millennials will be moving out of downtown to Northdale because it's a better opportunity to live, work, and play. So we must get around and improve the mobility across Hillsborough. The answer is to fix our roads first. When I can't commute the twelve miles from Bear's Avenue to downtown in less than forty-five minutes during rush hour, we got a problem. So it's ludicrous not to support TPX and then ask us to tax ourselves. Need to do both. And excuse me, we need to be, no tax, support TPX.
Joseph Oda, followed by Tim DeBozier. Good evening, Commissioners. I am Joe Oda, nine-nine-eight-zero Stockbridge Drive, Tampa, three-three-six-two-six, residing in the West Chase community, northwest Tampa County. Thank you for setting this public hearing on funding of the Community Transportation Plan and for the extraordinary work done on the project by all of you and our county staff. Several alternatives for funding the plan have been brought forward, and the community has been listening patiently, I think. No doubt, we will be given additional information later this evening during the commission discussions. However, one factor remains. There is an urgent need for a decision that leads to a timely source of revenue to implement the Community Transportation Plan. Simply stated, the best solution appears to be a voter referendum on the proposed one-half-cent sales tax increase for up to fifteen years duration. Perhaps, please decide in the majority to approve this referendum and let our voters determine in November whether or not such a change comes forward. It does not seem to be in the best interest of our populace around deliberations on this plan and its funding. I trust you understand that concern and will respond positively for Hillsborough County. Thank you again with good wishes. Tim DeBozier, followed by Denver, Paul Kozier.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kim DeBozier, resident of Desa, in the far northwest corner of the county. I am vice president of Johnson, Murrberry, and Thompson, the offices in the Channel District of downtown. I am a licensed professional civil engineer and have been practicing civil engineering for thirty-nine years. I am also a proud member of the Commission on the Status of Women and echo the comments of Avon Pride regarding the need for improving mobility options, particularly for the women and children, families in this community. I also had the honor of serving for four years as the Chair of the Tampa Hillsborough Trust Committee for four years on the Hillsborough County MPO. I am on board of the Greater Tampa Chamber of Commerce and co-chair its transportation council. So with all that said, this is also personal for me. When my son was sixteen years old, he said, you know, my, I can't come back here. I'm not coming back to a place where I have to drive everywhere. And today, he is a twenty-four-year-old biomedical engineer in Boston. So it's very personal for me as well. We are here to ask you tonight to allow the voters to move this forward. I have spent nearly three decades in this community watching us not invest in our local transportation system or in heart. And it is time to change. And only, we are the only ones that can change it. I ask you to allow this referendum to go, and you have seen the numbers. It needs to be a half cent or at least twenty years. Thank you for your support.
Followed by Ron Weaver. You passed? Smart. Ron Weaver, followed by Yvette Maldonado.
Six months ago, my grandchildren stayed home, and they kept saying daddy is always buzzing in traffic, and it broke my heart, and I resolved to try to do a little something about it at this time. Our moment has finally come, watching this for forty-two years in this room with your predecessors. But it's not with a, with all due respect, a half-cent increment in our property tax. It's for the half-cent sales tax for twenty years or more, which is bondable and is matchable by our federal partners, and we can go to the bond market and get solve our problem. If instead of the half-cent sales tax that we desperately need tonight, if we went instead of a property tax or a tax incremental financing, it has no records or history bonding, it has no ability to get matching. If five or twenty years, your experts said yesterday, maybe you'll, you're related enough history to be able to do something with your tax incremental in your property tax. We need a property tax for twenty other needs, at least that I can count, from homeless to aging to mental health and all the other needs for that tax incremental financing property tax, which in a recession does not stay, doesn't identify with simple property tax. We need a sales tax that's held up during the recession, which is paid one-fourth by the tourist. Therefore, I respectfully urge you to please give us a chance for the twenty-year half-cent sales tax, which will be bondable, it will be matchable, it will not be changeable by the next county commission like the tax incremental financing property tax alternative would be. The sales tax will be locked in by a referendum, please, Member Eight, please trust us on Member Eight. We elected you. Please trust us on Member Eight to do the right thing. And if it's upwards, down, it will be the people speaking. Please, don't disenfranchise all of us. All of us against it, all of us, all of us for it, all of those who are respectfully against it, whom I love dearly, and who make some great points. But let us all speak to the seventy-year-old, we want to risk those twelve or twenty other services that would suffer for five hundred thousand new people coming here the next twenty or thirty years. Those five hundred thousand new people need at least a substantial part of that money. Unless I'm five, or ten, or fifteen percent some years, it's almost a hurricane recovery, or a mental health need, or an epidemic, or if the jail needs a three-hundred eighty-dollar upgrade, the school order needs a couple of hundred eighty dollars. These are other needs that need that property tax. Let's go to a half-cent sales tax, not change it by another county commission. It's bondable, it's matchable, we have a history with it. Please, we do have enough rail on the plan because it's a twenty, because a twenty-year plan, it would give us a flexibility to be able to trust first and then earn the rail from the bus. So it does have enough rail and enough ability to have a public in here, carrying in here, and to advance those years, which is better than enough rail soon enough. And then, finally, it's only a dollar seventy-five a week. It's two-point-three billion dollars over twenty years, a six-point-seven billion-dollar deficit. Don't leave the cities out before by property tax. Please bring them into the war with respect for a sales tax that includes our beloved city. Thank you.
Yvette Maldonado, followed by Mark Savannah.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yvette Maldonado, East Hillsborough County. The Go Hillsborough project is a scam. It is a scam because from day one, it was used to promote a sales tax increase instead of reaching out to the citizens of Hillsborough and asking them what they wanted. It was planted to make the project look like an outreach, but it was clear that the goal was to convince citizens to accept a referendum and accept a new tax. The financial projections that you use are not credible at all. Unfortunately, you're speaking out of both sides of your mouth. On one hand, you say that you're going to have tremendous growth in the years to come. Yet, on the other hand, you show the sales tax revenue is being flat. Really? You mean, as the population grows, the sales tax revenue with Asbolorum says the same? There's this economy here that you have got to explain. I'm sorry, Commissioners, but you need more than just fuzzy math to sell your idea. And why do developers continue to get a free ride while we have to pick up the tab? We slashed builders' fees back in two thousand and eight and haven't done anything to increase them, even when the economy turned around. Why are average residents, including lower-income folks, forced to pay a few hundred dollars a year more while special interests continue to get free rides? Across the country, we're seeing people expressing their disdain for elected officials. It goes across the political spectrum. The same is happening here in Hillsborough. We're tired of watching politicians continue to mismanage our money and think they can just keep reaching back into our pockets every time they make mistakes. Forget about the special interests. Make the tough choices. Find the money in our budget and put it towards transportation. Change your bad growth policies that are costing us more money. I've got a great idea. Make believe once the known sports stadium, then in a flash, and come up with the money to repay it. There you go. And yet, let's rename all of our roads. They'll all have stadiums part of their name, so we'll have Plumingdale Stadium Avenue, Carson Stadium Avenue. Well, I think I found the solution, folks. And all stereocres. You haven't done your homework. Put aside this push for higher taxes. Give us accurate revenue projections. Eliminate the budget freebies and giveaways. You've got to prove to us that you will no longer increase the transit deficit. Thank you.
Mark Savannah, followed by Dennis Call.
Commissioners, good evening. Mark Statham, forty-three, forty-three, Echoplasm Parkway. I am president-elect of the Tampa Bay Builders Association. The association shares your concerns about our quality of life, our economic prosperity, the safety of our roadways, and addressing our traffic congestion. We thank you and your staff for working with us on the mobility fees. This fee will be used for new capacity, for future growth in our community. The mobility fee itself is not intended to be the sole source of transportation funding. And as such, our support of the fee remains conditioned upon additional funding sources. We believe these funding sources must be broad, consistent, sustainable, such that they're bondable and eligible for grant funding. As such, we support a half-cent, twenty-year transportation sales tax. This funding source provides reliable, long-term revenue stream that is less susceptible to economic cycles. It is shared amongst the cities and or parties. Its use is restricted for capital and operating costs for transportation. It provides opportunity for federal grant partnerships, if it is necessary to leverage major, required regional funding. It is paid by users of the system, such as tourists and out-of-town workers, and is not limited simply to homeowners. We also support other revenue sources, such as general revenue growth that may come from Asbolorium and existing estate and shared sales tax. We have already adopted a policy to dedicate a portion of new growth revenue to support transportation maintenance, and these opportunities can be further explored. We believe this policy should be strengthened by placing it in the form of an ordinance so that stakeholders can be assured of a dedicated funding source of transportation. Thank you for your opinion.
Dennis Call, followed by Bob Hurley.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, our Commissioners. My name is Dennis Call. I live at one-three-seven-ten Wolf Drive in Tampa, three-three-six-one-eight. I've lived in the Tampa community since nineteen fifty-four, so I've seen the changes in the growth that have taken place in this community. On the way down here this evening, I've been helping think to myself, how many times and how many ways do you have to say no? So lest there be any confusion, I'm against a referendum on a tax increase for thirty years, twenty years, fifteen years, ten years, five years, or any length of time. I'm thoroughly exasperated with movers and shakers in this community who are constantly trying to convince me that we need to tax ourselves more for transportation infrastructure in this county. Someone's going to have to correct me, or give me a better understanding. As far as I'm concerned, I pay taxes for infrastructure, for the county to build and maintain infrastructure. So when the county comes to me and says, we need more money for infrastructure, core responsibility of the county, then I can't help but say, you're spending money in all the wrong places. A lot of people have spoken to that tonight, and I think rather than a referendum, we should be considering, what we need to do is go back and look at the budget. Thank you very much for your time.
Paul Kozier.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Thank you all for being here. Bob Malak, with the Creative Tampa Chamber of Commerce, two-one, North Franklin Street. We're here to encourage you to vote for a half-cent sales tax for at least twenty years. We prefer thirty, but we're saying at least twenty. The reason we believe twenty is the minimum amount that that's what's required for to manage to get federal funding. Our tax dollars that have already gone to Washington, that we think should come back to this process. We've had that confirmed. Yesterday, a group of chamber leakers went to Washington DC, met with a director, a planner, and a division director in the Department of Transportation, and asked them how this works. We were told clearly, there must be a plan showing at least twenty years financial support for a road project to get that federal match. So we believe that that's something we should be doing. This is a process that you all started a few years ago, and we're asking you to please bring it home, let the citizens have a right to vote. We think it's important that they be able to do that. Twenty years for a half-cent sales tax. And two last points. One, Mike Merrill has done what he's been asked to do. He's in the top spot. He's an honorable man, and we support, we may not always agree with Mike, but we support the job he's doing as being an honorable man, and we think that he should be recognized for that. But thank you for your work. Last and most important to me, for Chambers, as said in this meeting, previous meetings, the Chamber gets millions of dollars from the county. I'm here to pick up the chips. We don't know what they're talking about. So thank you for your opportunity and time.
Gaines, Gaines Hayes, followed by Mindy Murphy.
My name is Gaines Hayes, from thirty-three, eighteen, Elizabeth, Florida. I'm here with a group of wonderful professionals in the back. Benjamin Franklin once said that the mouse prevention is worth more than the pound of dirt. In this case, I'm sure we can all agree that preventing public transportation issues is much easier than trying to fix them when they become an unavoidable issue. As of twenty fourteen, there was about one-point-three-two million people within Hillsborough County, and there is no doubt that that number has increased since. Florida's a rapidly growing state, and we should be proud of it. We recently became the third-most populated state in the entire country, and that could be fantastic news for Tampa, but only if we are prepared, oh, ahead of time for the growing pains and pressures that can hit our areas. I lived in Tampa my whole life, and this city has grown so much in the last few years that I've ever recognized. We have a beautiful new riverwalk that wraps around downtown. New apartments coming that are springing up all over town, in Hyde Park, west shore, Channel Side, Tampa Heights, and given that new one going up on the shore. Not to mention the new job opportunities that could come from the new Urban Medical Center that USF wants to build downtown. Now, Tampa's done a great job of preparing for roads coming years by providing new forms of regularity, new weapon spaces, and even possibly new jobs. But in order for all that to really hit home, there's one person in front that has to be taken care of. We need an employee thermal plan for preparing our transportation infrastructure to handle the flow of all these people that will come with this growth. Now, right now, there's definitely room for improvement. According to the car navigation company TomTom, Tampa was ranked eleventh of a hundred cities in the US as having the worst traffic congestion in twenty thirteen. In twenty thirteen, that ranking improved slightly to only fifteen worst in the US. What we're hoping for is for Hillsborough County to mitigate these growing pains. They say the best time to plant a tree is twenty years ago. The second best time is now. Twenty years from now, we'll be wishing that we invested more into transportation so that we could reach our true potential. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mindy Murphy. I live in the northwest corner of Hillsborough County in Highland Park, about a five-minute drive from the Penales County border.
And I am here tonight, in addition to where my Commission on the Status of Women at with Avon and support the Chief that on our behalf. I'm also here because I am the President and CEO of the Spring in Tampa Bay, our community certified by Domestic Finance Center. And my remarks will be brief. I just want to point out that, as we mentioned before, transportation, women is not deployed well, disproportionately harms women and children. And so the women and children that I served through the spring, all two thousand seven hundred of them on an annual basis, will tell you that the single biggest barrier they have to being safe in our community is affordable housing and transportation. Because when you are fleeing domestic violence and you can't get to where you need to be or you're far from the service provider, it is a very dangerous situation. So good transportation helps people who live in poverty, it helps women who are fleeing domestic violence, it helps young children, and we have to have good transportation in our community. I make that daily drive every day across our county, and I see how tough it is, but I'm someone who has means. For people who don't have means, lack of transportation is an incredible barrier to being safe. So I ask you to... I make that daily drive every day across our county, and I see how tough it is, but I'm someone who has means. For people who don't have means, lack of transportation is an incredible barrier to being safe. So I ask you to let the voters of Hillsborough County have the opportunity to decide whether or not they want a transportation option that includes a half-cent sales tax. And again, as other folks have said, whether it passes or fails, then it's left in the voter's hands, and we have an opportunity to advocate for our position in the community and let democracy prevail in our community. So thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you for giving attention to this matter, and thank you, Mike, for all you've done on this issue so far.
Sarah, followed by David Luze, Moss.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Schrein. I reside at two oh eight North Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm here tonight as a group of not only young professionals, but folks that I'd like to consider movers and shakers. I consider that a compliment. And we're here tonight in support of the twenty-year half-cent sales tax referendum being added to the ballot because we truly care about the future of Tampa. And it's been amazing to see the growth here in our community, not just downtown, but throughout the county. And we all know if we want to continue this growth and be a place that young professionals want to move when they're starting their career or raising a family, then we really need to invest in long-term transportation infrastructure to support this kind of growth. So in addition to expanding our roads and improving traffic, we need to invest in alternative options if we want to remain competitive. So there's a next generation of voters, myself included, Jacob's son included, that don't necessarily want to own cars. And we know right now that's not extremely convenient option for living in Tampa, but it would be great to see us taking steps towards a reliable and safe mass transit option for our community. Definitely something I'd like to see in my lifetime, if possible. And with the twenty-year half-cent sales tax, we'll finally be able to make these steps needed for transportation improvements and transit options in our community. So I appreciate your vote, vote in support of putting the referendum on the ballot, and I hope you'll let the voters decide what they want. Thank you.
Good evening, Miss Moss, and Miss Halliwell.
Hey, Bruce, eight-hundred, South Dakota Avenue, three-three-six-zero-six. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to hear my opinion. I'm here tonight as a young professional to show my support for a twenty-year half-cent sales tax to help on the city's transportation needs. Poor financial planning and foresight has led us to this moment. We are now playing catch-up as other metros pass us and recruiting and retaining business in young talent. As a Republican, I am the first to question a tax on the people. However, I know when to let my political lean to not trump what is best for my community. As a true native, I've lived all over this county, as a true native to Tampa, I've lived all over this county and understand the concerns of those who oppose this measure, and I myself was against it. However, it is clear our time for growth is now. We can no longer be passive and keep our fingers crossed and our eyes closed praying for something to change. Inaction is no longer acceptable choice. I have seen firsthand the lack of transportation infrastructure has cost our county growth opportunity. I've had the pleasure of meeting with companies looking to move their headquarters and facilities to our community, and their number one concern is transportation. Those that decide to bring their businesses and families here have an expectation of us to address this issue. If our inner core is unable to accommodate prosperity, these same businesses will leave or choose to go elsewhere and thus burden all of us. Please remember the redevelopment of Channel Side and the expectations that come from investors such as Jeff Finnick. USF Health Heart Institute alone will bring in thousands of people commuting throughout our region, not to mention sporting and concert events. Hope we get the right word. We have the duty to the companies moving here to make the right decision and better our transportation infrastructure. If we continue to lay a step towards progress, we will lose the opportunity to track other investors. As a community, we have to make hard decisions in order to move forward. I am asking for a twenty-year half-cent sale tax because I believe it is the best first step in accomplishing the goals for our community. It is clear we need safer streets, multiple transportation options, and better, better roads. Less than twenty-year commitment will not satisfy these needs. I had heard an argument that the children who will be paying this tax don't get a chance to voice their opinion. I'm here to tell you today, we are your children. Look around. When was the last time this many young individuals were at a public hearing special on transportation? The previous generation's lack of planning is the reason we are in this mess. The future is standing in front of them, in front of you, and we are asking them a chance to vote. Lastly, Commissioners, when your time in office comes to an end, may you be able to say, "Looking back over your past life, I have fought a good fight. My work here is finished. Hillsborough County has gained new lustre by my life."
Good evening, Commissioner Halliwell, followed by Tom Rest.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Joseph Patano. I live in Grand Hampton off a county-lined road. You've got to come up there and try to get out of Grand Hampton in the morning. You've got fifty cars at one time coming from Pasco County to come to Hillsborough County to work. And we've got a bike lane up there also. It's about this wide. It happens to be white. The grass on the side of the road, I see mothers and fathers wheeling carriages. No place to walk. We annexed some land next to Worton High School for four hundred and something homes, and I asked for sidewalks and streetlights. Guess what? We get nothing. In fact, the city of Tampa gives us zero. They're collecting about thirty million dollars a year just in ad lorn tax. We got one park. They were supposed to add to it. In oh fifteen, the mayor decided he was going to build another park downtown. Just recently, he's doing another one, taking the BP oil money, twenty-seven million dollars for another park. Of course, now he wants to put in a train station to go to the airport because all of the parking lots in the city, they're losing money. So you're going to have to drive to park in one of our parking lots, take the train to the airport. You've got to make a decision here tonight. Don't let it go to November. The answer's got to be no. Thank you.
Tom Rest, followed by Senator Laura of Tom Rest, unincorporated Pinellas County. Good evening, Commissioners, and greetings to all of you who have come out here tonight to have your opinions heard. It's by broad input from the public, we arrive with better public policy solutions. I'll ask with Bill Hillsborough, this has been a top-down process. First, some housekeeping. Two members of the chamber have said they don't get any money from your agency. They do for trade and protocol council. One invoice, just as an example, that the Greater Tampa Bay Chamber, Greater Tampa Chamber sent is number two-three-one-one-seven-five, which I mentioned at my principal chamber, so they can look it up and see that they in fact do get money from this borough county. And if they can't find those invoices, they can make other permission requests for them, as I did. Commissioners, I always like to remind you that you can thank Bob popcorn for my presence here tonight. He's not in the room, but you can thank him because the manager just won't stand down. He's zero for four on sales tax hikes he's afforded. Yet he and Mislain them continue to get to drive the public policy process for some reason I can't understand. If these people who are pushing and succeeding getting a slush fund here, their brethren in Pinellas County will be right back at it in a couple of years, even though they lost in twenty fourteen with sixty percent down. So again, Bob Corn caused me to be here. This is the battle of thermopylae. This is the battle for the road. I could talk about traffic volumes and declining transit ridership and all kinds of factors, but I don't think I'm going to change any minds here. I'm not going to do any of that because I think there's a better way to formulate this, and that is that anyone who votes for this will end up regretting voting, putting this on the ballot. I can't say any more than that without showing my hand, but among my many faults, you're not going to find stupidity. And I know it sounds a little arrogant, but just yesterday, I was able to show that the newly passed Pinellas County fracking ban actually allows fracking. So actually, I'm going to surprise a few of my friends here in the room by saying, "Please, why don't you go ahead and put this on the ballot?" Because that way, we can get the count of people who will not stand down, who will get in the way, always get in the way of real progress. We have the money. We don't need more money, but still, I'm going to ask you to put it on the ballot.
Hey, where's the clock, man?
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. Hold on a second. Sir, hold on.
I thought we only had three minutes.
Well, the clock is, the one is ticking every time. Now, this is my last one to you, sir, okay?
Can I have a few more seconds?
Last one, I'll give you about fifteen more seconds.
Thank you. You'll be painted as do-nothing as higher opponents for delaying important transportation decisions by insisting on a tax hike bill. Nonetheless, place it on the ballot, do it, just do it. I can't wait for you to do it so that we, the people, may have a count of those tracks. Thank you for your time.
Senator Laura, followed by Douglas Towns.
Hi. My name is Sandra Solon-Lara, and I live at forty-fifty with Spring Lake. There's been a few people who have spoken today and at some of the other meetings on behalf of some groups that I belong to. To my surprise, they actually didn't represent a single one of my views. I'm a woman, and I don't support this plan. I'm a recent USF grad, and I don't support this plan. I'm a millennial, and I don't support this plan. Let me explain to you, there's a whole bunch of people shaking their heads behind me. Reality is that I've been around this area for about twelve years. Like I said, USF grads, that's four. Right before me, my brother, that's four. Right before me, my aunt, who I came to visit and fell in love with USF when I was just in middle school, four years before that. That's collective twelve years, consecutive ones. In those twelve years, Bruce Bedance has been under construction. Forty-second Street has felt like a roller coaster ride from hell. And reality is, I lived far from campus down Bruce Bedance because it was affordable, and it took me any morning from forty-five minutes to an hour to go four miles to campus. Reality is, I'm leaving the Tampa Bay area. Yes, I am a USF grad, leaving Tampa Bay area as a millennial. It is not because there isn't rail solutions. It is not because there isn't a versatile plan. It's because in twelve years, I haven't seen a single road paved or a single road expanded. I grew up in Miami, and I saw highways that were expanded faster than this. That's embarrassing. Reality is, fifteen years from now, when this plan is finished, I will be leaving DC because I won't want to live in DC when I have kids or a family. I don't want to carry strollers on the metro. I don't want to carry a diaper bag on the metro. I don't want to go meet my husband for date night on the metro. Guess what DC metropolitan areas and Tampa have in common? Driving is health. People won't give up their cars. That's a lie. Millennials will throw up. In fifteen years, I'll be thirty-six years old, hopefully with a family and kids. And I don't want to sit in traffic for two hours to make my son's baseball game. I don't want to sit in traffic for two hours to get home for dinner. That's ridiculous. Reality is, we don't need to play catch-up. We need to play leapfrog. Jump over all of the other metropolitan cities that are sitting behind the rail. Jump over them. Find a real solution. We spent six years on this plan that solves nothing, and in six years, we haven't paved a single road. Two-seventy-five doesn't look any better. Bruce Bedance is still under construction. I'm not quite sure what they're doing now. It looks like some sort of, like, Passover. I don't know. It hasn't solved anything. It's made it worse. I have to drive to New Tampa to knock on doors because I work for a campaign, and I worked for campaigns all of my life throughout USF for four years. And driving to New Tampa takes me forty-five minutes to an hour. Of time, I should be getting paid knocking on doors, actually making a difference, but I'm sitting in my car angry. So I don't support this plan. It's been voted on already. We pounded this till the end.
Hi. My name is Douglas T. I live at one-five-one-one-zero Winterwind Drive here in Tampa, Florida. And I'm not sure, though, I've spent a lot of time trying to think about what I'm going to talk to you about today, and in listening to what has been put to you so far, I've just changed my mind. I'm not here to represent any business, any special interest group, any community activist group, any group. I'm here to represent me, a common taxpayer who fights every day to live on a budget. I'm asking you to do the same thing. Please learn how to live on your budget. I understand it's a tough, tough decision. I understand it's not easy. You can't ask for more money year after year after year after year. It just won't work. I want to have faith for you to do the right thing. I think in the last few meetings, you've done the right thing. You've asked for a new development to pay more in their fair share for infrastructure. That should be a non-issue. If they need to pay more, then ask them to pay more. You asking for more money in the form of a one-half cent sales tax is not going to make congestion go away. People are going to sit in traffic at five o'clock on I-275 and I-4, even if you pass a penny sales tax. It's not going to go away. Don't ask me, as a boomer, to pay for infrastructure for someone that doesn't want to purchase their own car. We don't have the population density to support mass transit. It just won't work in suburban. I bought a car, moved to the suburbs. I understand what's required of that. And last but not least, I ask one thing to each and every one of you. In your heart of hearts, think a minute. Think. If this was really a good plan, if this was really an answer to our problem, would you be asking for half a cent for ten years, for fifteen years? I don't think so. You'd be asking for five cents for a hundred years. Have vision. If you want to do something, be bold. Get out and move on. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Judy Webb from Sefner, Florida. That's out in East Hillsborough County, just west of Plant City. And I'd like to talk about what this is really about. According to Commissioner Merman, we have money available in the budget for transportation. Of course, it may not be money in the budget for a Vinick rail, a rail that's not going to go to my town, a rail that's not going to go anywhere in Hillsborough County except for Tampa, possibly the airport, a rail that will not be funded by the federal government, a rail such as in Orlando. Phase two was initially, phase one was initially funded by the federal government, but phase two was canceled in October of last year because they did not have the ridership, just as the Vinick rail will not have ridership in Hillsborough County. People are not going to give up their cars. You will not have the ridership. The taxpayers will have to pay for the development and the maintenance of the rail. We have money for roads in the current budget, and that leaves views for fixing our roads. So I request the Commissioners to vote no for this tax referendum. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Todd Josko, seventeen-twenty-six, East Seventh Avenue in Tampa. I am here this evening to speak in favor of a twenty-year sales tax on behalf of the CAO, Tampa Bay. Why twenty years versus fifteen years? Like a lot of speakers have said before, anything less than twenty years may in fact disqualify Hillsborough County from attracting federal funds. These are monies that we have paid for our tax dollars when we reject federal funds. Those funds don't go to reduce the deficit. Those funds go to other communities. So we should get the monies that we've invested back into our community. Why do we support a sales tax? A sales tax is the only dedicated revenue source that adequately funds new transportation improvements. Other proposals and plans just don't get us there. We came before you, the county commission, backing staff in support of higher mobility fees. Nobody wants to pay higher fees, but we believe in Hillsborough County, we believe in the need for transportation improvements, and the commercial real estate industry wanted to do its share to make those improvements through higher fees. We did that, understanding that mobility fees are just a drop in the bucket compared to our needs. And we also did that with the understanding that there is a need and/or additional, more substantial fees to do what we need to do in terms of transportation improvement. As of today, we feel that we're the only ones who are on the boat. However, we do However, we do feel that there are a lot of folks that want to grab an orange and start growing and it's up to you to give them the opportunity by placing a twenty-year referendum on the November ballot. There's going to be some folks who vote no and that's okay. But there's going to be, we feel, more people that believe in this community, that understand the cost of traffic, both the economic opportunities and lost jobs and missed opportunities for transit-oriented development. We believe that there's a majority of residents in this county that understand the human cost of traffic in terms of lost family time and their lack of ability to do things that make this community great and take advantage of all that there is to offer in the Tampa Bay community, but they just need the opportunity. So please, support a twenty-year referendum and move forward with placing on the November ballot. Thank you for your time, your consideration.
Ray Schormonti, followed by Chris Verdi. Ray Schormonti, one oh one oh five Bradley Drive, Tampa, Florida. Take a little bit different position. While I think a thirty or twenty-year referendum is a good idea and what we need to do, doing something is better than doing nothing. When I started going to school, night school, it took me ten years to get through college at USF, but I worked full-time while I did it. So I'm going to go to the opposite end of the spectrum. Even a five-year tax is better than nothing. There are even advantages to that. If we did a five-year tax, it would give people a chance to see whether this government can perform and do some good things in the community that they feel is worth it. And if they think it's worth it, I believe they would extend that to a longer period that then it could include money for doing rail or whatever premium transit technology is the state-of-the-art at that time. I just think we have to move forward. There's enough solid projects that we could easily come up with to use five years' worth of funding, including streetlights, including fixing some of the roads, intelligent transportation with our traffic lights, a lot of things, and show people that we can actually accomplish something. There's other distrust and then they decide. At the end of that five years, have we done enough to extend it? At the end of five years, we'll have two important studies done by FDOT, one on repurposing the streetcar, one on considering premium transit, on maybe existing rail or some other technology, and then we can include that in a long-term plan after we've proved we can do something. But just never moving forward to me is not a solution. As I told you last time, I've seen this for forty years, we just keep talking and not doing anything. So to me, it's better than to do something very minimal, do it well, prove to people that we can get something done, and then move forward with that. Since I have a minute left, I want to say some other things. What I see in society today is so interesting, everybody doesn't do the same thing. I can see it all over, you know, you talk about everybody lives in the suburbs. I'm all over this region now, there's growth going on in every possible type of land use category. Everybody isn't moving downtown, but everybody isn't moving to the suburbs. The growth rate in the cities and suburbs is almost equal now for the first time in fifty years. It's about half and half. So you're never going to get everybody to agree on the same thing, so whatever plan we have has to address everybody's needs in a fair way. And that's going to be the key to doing that and that could be the key to a test period to show we can do something to at least get off of dead center. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Chris Verdi. Ken Roberts, fifty-two thirty-five Moonshell Drive in Palm Beach, Florida. Good evening. My good friend Kent Bailey asked a really important question. Keep drifting around. Will it pass? No, it won't. Why am I so sure? Because the county already has the money. The county has no business taxing people for money they already have. And for those of you who support a sales tax increase, why do you want me to pay for it twice? I don't understand, I really don't. In a recent proposal, and I think Commissioner Merman made a proposal available, it wasn't at the meeting, a proposal was made using the growth dollars currently available to us in projections, and without a tax increase, it raises one point oh five billion in ten years. That's a little over, a little bit north of a hundred billion a year, and that's within a sand wedge of where Go Hillsborough was going. So let's not pay for it twice. And no cuts are needed. This is growth, growth funds that was provided. That's what we should do. And you should vote no tonight on putting this on the ballot. It's not right for the county to be running surpluses and ask us to raise taxes on ourselves. And it's not the path to result in that.
Christine Verdi, followed by Leonard Mead.
Good evening, Commissioner Merman. I'm going to read a little bit of a letter that we sent to you on December fifteenth. I represent the Tampa Downtown Partnership. I reside at seven twenty-one Fielding in Tampa. And I'm now from, I'm speaking here on behalf of our board of directors and other members of our organization who feel it's really important, the process we've gone through so far, and bringing it to some conclusion. And I do appreciate your continuing effort to be heard and to come with some conclusions. And I hope that that can happen from now. In December, we wrote, "For the past two years or more than, our Downtown Transportation Committee, including many members of our Board of Directors, closely followed the Transportation for Economic Development Policy Leadership Group. We were impressed by such a thorough exploration of the ties between transportation and our county's economic health and future growth, as well as the extensive intergovernmental cooperation. It was also very, very heartening to see the number of people who attended all of the numerous opportunities you gave for information and also for question-asking. We all benefited from a comprehensive look at the various funding sources available to improve transportation options in our community. We were willing at that time to support the Go Hillsborough Plan if there was also consideration of using all of the possible revenue sources, all feasible funding sources outlined in the Go Hillsborough Plan, including the sales tax referendum, gas taxes, and mobility fees. Felt that the plans struck a fair balance between the sometimes disparate needs in urban, suburban, and rural areas, and the distribution of funds amongst the cities, unincorporated county, and heart seemed to be admirable. Now, when our Board of Directors approved this letter, we urged exploration of the many funding options as possible. It's encouraging that the new mobility fee structure was passed, but we were disappointed when the thirty-year proposal was not awarded by the, was not forwarded to the voters. It's our understanding that to do any kind of long-term, meaningful mobility improvement, a minimum of twenty years steady funding is needed for matching federal funds. Some feel fifteen might be allowable, but we feel it's cutting it too close. We maintain our position that the right thing to do is to let the voters decide for themselves. However, give us a choice to do something that will help the next generation as well. Our collective future is in your hands. Thank you for your consideration and thank you for continuing your work. Some very good ideas.
Leonard Mead, followed by Warren Hood.
Good evening, all of you, and thank you for allowing, putting up with forty, fifty, sixty people to come up here. Give you advice about what to do. My name is Leonard Mead, I'm from Palm Beach. Moved here three years ago and enjoyed the low-tax state of Florida because I came from Massachusetts, which we call Tax-chooses. This hat says Tea, Tea Party, and what that means is taxed enough already. That's what the Tea Party stands for. Now, you folks are enjoying ten percent higher taxes every year, thirty-nine million bucks more last year. And we're in a fast-growing county, faster than the state, faster than the country. But you folks have intentionally starved transportation funding here in this county. You spent four percent and the state average is thirteen percent. And the fact that you intentionally are not fixing the potholes and are letting transportation crumble is your own fault. You've decided to do this and now you come here and say you want to raise taxes to fund transportation? That's almost an affront. You know, working steps out here who have to pay this don't get any raises like you automatically do with the rising tax rate here in Hillsborough. Now you are allocating over one hundred percent more than the state in two or three areas of your budget, specifically non-operating expenses and human resources. So, you know, we're in a recession now, there are ninety million people that can't find a job, they don't have any income. The idea of raising taxes kills jobs. What I would suggest is please reallocate the money you've already got that you're spending over a hundred percent more in these two areas of your budget. And there's some sheets I've passed out that you can see this, it's all your public record. And don't put this on the ballot. Reallocate the funds you already have in those two major areas and put it in transportation, just like the rest of the state. You've got an administrator that makes close to three hundred thousand dollars a year and you've got over nine hundred people that make a hundred thousand bucks a year in your payroll. No offense, folks, do your job. Let them figure it out. Just reallocate. Don't send us any more tax bill. Don't waste our time and yours putting this on any ballot. Have a good night. Thank you very much.
Warren Hood. Warren Hood, going for the last time. Blue Green. Followed by Greg Prithas.
I've been to a few of these meetings and I honestly get a little bit confused. Sorry, these states may have had. Oh, I live in Blue Green, I live in Lutes, Florida. One eight eight oh one, Lutes, L O R, in Lutes. But I do get confused at some of these sessions because tonight, for example, it's a, I came here looking at a fifteen-year plan, other people are discussing a twenty-year plan, other meetings we were asked for is a ten-year plan and a thirty-year plan, then it was a half cent, then it was a one cent, and suddenly I think I'm dealing with the Keystone Cops. I don't know what the heck is going on and what the real solution is. I know the real solution is to go back into the budget because the money's there, do the job, and then you'll get the trust of the voters who will support plans that you are trying to put forth. The projection shows six hundred thousand people are moving into Hillsborough County. Hillsborough County is a magnet for people who are moving here from high-tax states. They're trying to get away from that stuff. So why should Hillsborough County suddenly become number one and say, "We've got the highest sales tax of any major metropolitan area in Florida"? That's a great message to send out there, isn't it? Well, I don't think so, because people are trying to escape from that stuff. I was up there, I'm from Connecticut, and Connecticut is, you can start seeing the moving vans going the other direction. I made a statement the last time at the last meeting for this kind of a plan, and I'll stick with it. You have six hundred thousand people, you have a building boom going on, you have more money coming in, you already have the money, so why not send a good message and make Hillsborough County the shining light and the leader by reducing the sales tax a half cent? And let's go that way, it's in the national market economy, yes, we're number one and we want to keep it that way. And if you guys support that, I made an offer before, you didn't take, well, some of you might have, but you all get a free sticker to wear around town and they know that you're not for a tax increase. And you could probably sell some of these down in the gift shop on the first floor. This would be great, so. Any of you folks out here in one one?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Sorry, you need to trust us here. Oh, I will. So. Thank you. I'm done.
Blue Green. That was Blue Green. Greg Prithas.
Good evening, my name is Greg Prithas from Riverview, Florida. I've heard some say that government doesn't do zero-based budgeting. That's ridiculous, it lacks wisdom, and it's not Republican. If you think government shouldn't do zero-based budgeting, please change to Democratic. How can you lose? You were elected to represent the people, to vote for the people in their stead, but instead of making the decision yourself, you're putting the referendum on the ballot. That's a dereliction of duty. When it comes to making the tax decision yourself, without zero-based budgeting, you're too uninformed to even be capable of making that decision. Yet instead of being accountable, you would pump the decision to the citizens who are by design less informed than you are. We need government to be efficient and we need some wisdom. And this charade, once and for all, vote no.
Commissioners, my name is Terry Temple, I live in Brandon, and I first want to say thank you to the four of you who voted against putting this on the ballot last time. If the people want this on the ballot, the people have a mechanism to put it on the ballot. An April op-ed in Tribune said that the average Floridian goes a hundred and eleven days into the year just to pay taxes. After the last vote, Commissioner Chris suggested a two-and-a-half percent reduction in every department. With a four-billion-dollar budget, that works out to a hundred billion dollars a year. The immediate outcry was, we don't have places where we can get those kinds of savings. Of course, no one wants their domain diminished, but we need to find the ways. The school district hired a consultant and showed them how they could save four hundred and four million dollars in five years. It might create some stress for you to economize, but I'm sure nearly every taxpayer in Hillsborough County is already feeling that kind of stress and doesn't want any more. We hire you to do the work to figure out how to do what needs to be done without taxing us more. Instead, we get a twenty-five-million-dollar BP settlement put away for future root use rather than for fixing roads that could be simply resurfaced now that in a short time will have to be completely torn up and repaid. We get a fifteen-million-dollar sports complex, a six-million-dollar park, four-point-four million in historic preservation grants, three-point-four million to replace the library that's already being used, a two-million-dollar capital asset preservation program, two million for the Experimental Innovation Alliance, one-point-four million for Lucy Del Park, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand for Plant City Park lighting. There's no telling how many smaller projects that didn't have enough zeros to make it to the Tampa Bay Times list, but I'm going to guess there's thousands, I can name several right off the top of my head right now. I'm asking you to do the jobs that we pay you to do, find a way to make what you have, do the job. Forget what you want and focus on what we need. Thank you.
Tim Smith, forty-four eighty-three, Mookere Circle, on incorporated Hillsborough County. I'm here to encourage you to be leaders in the left, with invasion towards. I have been here for almost forty years and transportation, infrastructure needs have been underfunded for almost all of those years. One thing about infrastructure construction, also I'm on the Board of Directors of Suncoast Utility Contractors, so I am intimately involved with road building, underground utilities and everything else. Every dollar that gets put in to those type of jobs has a two to two-and-a-half. that gets put in to those type of jobs has a two to two-and-a-half return on investment. We need to get out to the public, let them know. That's our right. I'm asking the commission to support the twenty-plus years for the bonding issues. I'm asking and urging that you also utilize the five-cent gas tax that you, I believe Hillsborough County is not incorporating yet. It is mileage has gone up in cars. Everything's gone up. We're getting less money in to take care of the roads through gas tax. That needs to be addressed. As leaders, I hope for you to look and be leaders with vision going forward. I hear all the nazis, the no crowd. No, no, no. Sometimes you gotta be positive and look to the future. It's a tough job you got. I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
William Smith, followed by Daniel Kane. Daniel Smith?
I'm a Smith, but my first name's not Daniel.
Well, I have a Dennis.
But I'm Smith. Stick together.
No, no, sir. I'm asking for Dennis Smith.
I know. I'm just joking.
For Dennis Smith, okay. Daniel Kane?
Yes, Daniel Kane, fourteen twenty-one, Hilton Place, Tampa Lot. I wasn't gonna come tonight because I went to the last one, and me and a lot of other people took the bus there and told you what we thought. The three commissioners who were yes votes before voted yes. Three no votes voted no. One commissioner consulted his astrological chart. We had no. So, I'm not a millennial. I guess I'm representing older potential voters. But millennials get a lot more right than you folks think. Most of the audience, most of you continue to think that the only way to get around any city is with a car, and we have two different transportation systems. Normal people get jobs and drive cars to work, and everybody else takes the bus. So, we have to make sure we have enough bus lines to get the people that wait tables to work, and we have to get enough bus lines to get our employees to work. I take the bus every day to work. I'm a consultant. I have to pay less than fifty thousand dollars a year in twenty years. I'm the only person that takes the bus that wears a tie. At least, I've never seen anybody else on a bus in Hillsborough County with a tie. In regular cities, working people take the bus. It's not considered an entrance into society to be able to buy your own car and drive a car. Some people just don't like to drive, and they should be able to have real jobs. So, I don't think it matters whether you put it on. I was very angry last week, this, last time, because I thought, "Just put it on here, ballot. Let us vote. Show a little confidence that the voters can vote for what they want." But they didn't even let us vote. But I'm back today asking how to put it on the ballot, because number one, I don't think it's gonna pass. None of you have the credibility to sell it now to the population, making this work. But that shouldn't be his role. You people are not, we are not gonna get the transportation tax passed now. And the other thing, I came here tonight is to tell you, if you don't get things like Uber right whenever they solve the transportation problem, you made another Uber mistake last night. You continue to shoot at the one organization, company that's come in and given us the transportation option. In Pinellas County, the transportation company partnered with Uber, solved the last mile on the bus problem. Here, we partnered with Yellow Cap. It's not gonna work. It's not the same thing. The few folks do not understand that the technology coming in, Uber, Airbnb, you keep acting like they're too arrogant. They won't do it our way. Well, Pinellas County's getting tax revenue because they were willing to do it their way. Uber's going to be here. Rideshare companies are gonna be here. It's the one thing that allows me to get around and have a special job, not a car. It's not messing up the one thing. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Joe Wicker. I live in Dover. And I want to say that I believe in free markets, and I think that chambers provide a good service to the community and represent businesses well most of the time. I'm also a small business owner. But I have to tell you, when I first came in here, I saw a bunch of Bernie supporters that were here with their life, got baby blue signings. And I'm a little surprised by, I'm a little surprised by the chamber's position on this. I'm gonna get back to that in just a second. I was on the front portion of my father-in-law, and I was asking him, because he's older and wiser, and I said, "Why does this keep happening? Why, why, why do we keep having this discussion?" And he said, "You know, I've been living here over thirty years, and every now and then, after about ten, fifteen years, they let the roads go. And it gets people upset. Next thing you know, people are right for their tax increase." And sure enough, here comes the solution. Let's get more of your money. And so, we don't, we don't want that to be the solution. I don't think that it is. The I four connector with the cross town, I love that. I take it every day. I've taken it every type of hour you can imagine, off-peak, on-peak times. No one takes it. There's maybe five cars on that connector. If people aren't willing to pay a dollar twenty-five or a dollar fifty to use that and maintain control of their travel in their own vehicle, why in the world would we think that people would pay more to get on a train where they can't control their own schedule? They're not gonna do it. The TBX program that a lot of people give support, that Commissioner Miller is now is against, is a no-brainer. We should support that. One thing I noticed about the people here with the chamber is that, and I like the chamber, but let's be honest, most of the people that are here are really gonna take transportation. They're not gonna take a train. Most of them drive their own cars. And we have to be honest, they are from organizations and representing organizations that seek to benefit financially from a half-cent sales tax.
By the way, by the way.
Excuse me. Officer, that's the last time I'm gonna take it from you, sir. That's the last time. You're interrupting people. Stop the clock. You got time. Please. Take him outside and talk to him. Continue, sir.
So, the thing is, is that the people that are asking for no more tax increases, they're not representing a special interest. They're really just representing themselves and their families and their own paycheck. So, I appreciate everyone's ability to be here, but it really does seem like those that support more taxes want everyone else to ride a train or an additional bus so that they can have their roads cleared for themselves. I don't think they're really gonna take this move as a conversation. I'd ask that you vote no.
Mister Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you tonight. I think a couple of clear things.
Sorry, can you state your name and address?
Andy Baints, four oh one East Jackson Street, sweet twenty-seven hundred, Tampa Lot, three three six zero two. Thanks, sir. Couple of things that are clear. The status quo cannot be changed. I don't think there's anybody that's been up here and said that there's not a problem with transit or transportation or traffic or other issues. And right now, I think it's a time where our community must make a significant investment to better roads and into more transit options. I think it's a matter of perspective. It's a matter of perspective for whether you look at it as an investment for our future or whether you look at it as a penalty to someone now. Our businesses and families deserve the opportunity to make this decision. I have trust in the electorate to make a decision. They can go out there and decide whether or not they want to invest in the future. It's pretty clear that the cost of doing nothing now is much greater than the cost of investing in transportation options that will support our community. In order to improve our community and quality of life, we have to make additional investments in roads, transit, and pedestrian facilities. The only way to prepare for the future is to take action now. I'll leave you with an old proverb. A society grows great when old men and women plant trees in the huge shade and know they will never sit. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Tonkey. I live in South Tampa. A quick note, I was also really disappointed. In my baby blue pen, I was hoping for a tie dye one made out of hemp, but, you know, I digress. Calling a millennial, I represent the future of our city. I was raised in Northdale, and now I live in South Tampa. I've always depended on a car to get around, and for the past twenty-six years, I've seen the city grow. It's been getting nastier out there by the minute. Well, the numbers are in. Growth is happening, and about, about one point three million people live in Hillsborough County. Without numbers, expected to double in the next twenty years. Without significant investments in transportation options, we're setting ourselves up for some traffic jams. My experience with mass transit comes from living in Toronto, Ontario, where I didn't need a car. I depended on transportation to get to work daily, explored the outskirts of the fine city it was, felt safe, and truly experienced a new part of this world with little worry and personal transportation costs. Don't think a millennial will ride public transit. I will, and so will the thousands of us I represent today. So, now that I'm back in my beloved hometown, I'm behind the wheel every day, sitting in the traffic my mother never dreamed I would have to suffer through. I do not want to crawl on two seventy-five or the Veterans anymore. I'm here to support a half-cent sales tax for a certain amount of twenty years, because in twenty years, I hope to already own a business here. I hope to attract new talent to the Tampa Bay area. I hope to see a new city where I can raise a family back in Northdale and can leave to my business in South Tampa, Rocky Point, downtown, or Channel Side without sitting in my car for an hour and a half every day. Aside from my personal perspective, the truth is, the future is already slapping us in the face. There's nothing really innovative happening here today. We are not the first city to explore the growth and demand urge for public transit. So, God, I say, let's vote honestly for the future. Invest in us, the future of Tampa's entrepreneurs, Tampa's new businesses, and Tampa's generations that follow. Thank you very much.